I'd like to welcome you all to the August 26, 2014 work session of the Brookhaven City Council. Madam Chair, if you please call the roll.
Yes, our Mayor Jay Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District One.
Present.
Councilmember Bates-Madison, District Three.
Here.
And Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District Four.
Here.
All present have a quorum.
I want to apologize for my being a few minutes late. Thirty minutes ago, I was downtown at the Fulton County Courthouse, so I think it did pretty good to get up here. Appreciate y'all waiting. Any opening remarks? Any announcements? Okay, agenda items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have an upcoming agenda item that we wanted to have further discussion with you all regarding the pouring hours. As noted currently in Chapter Four of our ordinances, Alcohol Beverage Ordinance, you did ask the chief to look at other neighboring cities, but you also wanted him to get a better sense of the activity or violations or the patrolling and law enforcement as it relates to the pouring hours. So he is here this evening to discuss that with you and make a recommendation. Chief.
Thank you, Mrs. City Manager. What we actually did was check the cities immediately surrounding us. And I didn't, I'm not sure of the cabs' hours, but Atlanta just moved their hours to 2:30, I believe. Stopped serving, 3 o'clock out the door. Shambly, effective August 19th, changed their hours to stop serving basically at 3 o'clock and the doors closed at 3:30. Taking that into consideration, I also looked up additional arrests and data that we pulled and going from July 31st through August 26th, just some of the arrests that we made between the hours of 2 o'clock in the morning and 6 o'clock in the morning, some of these were pretty staggering. DUIs, we had 60 arrests during that time period. Wanted people, we've arrested 31 wanted people between the hours of 2 and 6. Disorderly conduct arrests, 75. Drug possession, 47. We've had 26 burglars reported during that time, of which five arrests were made, and we've had 43 assaults and batteries, of which we arrested 27 people. And then the break-ins to the cars during that time period are also pretty staggering. We had 14 vehicles stolen and 32 vehicles broken into. With that being said, you know, we were looking, originally I recommended a 2:30 and I would stand by that just to make it standardized every day of the week with the exception, the only difference would be Sunday morning, opening would have to be at 12:30 according to state law. And then make it just like Shambly or Atlanta, half hour later, everyone out the door. Because right now, we currently have staggered hours as far as that goes, depending on the day of the week. Sometimes it's, we serve until 3:55 a.m. Saturdays and Sundays, we serve till 2:55. Then people have to 4:25 or 3:25 to stop consumption and then doors have to be closed an hour after the service is stopped.
All right. Any questions for the chief?
So what do I hear is your recommendation?
Shambly's chief actually called up prior to their making their vote and I told him we were recommending 2:30, stop serving, and then 3 o'clock out the door.
And then that would make it uniform across the weekdays would match the current weekend hours now, is that right?
Right.
Shambly just adopted later hours, though.
3 o'clock, I believe they had 2 o'clock before.
Yeah. And the mayor called me and asked me about that as well.
What's your own assessment of these numbers? I mean, just looking at them, DUIs alone, 60? I mean, how should we assess these?
Well, we have DUIs outside of those hours too, earlier in the morning. It's mainly the Beaufort Highway Corridor that we're having the issues with. Most of the other bars and restaurants actually closed down earlier anyway in other parts of the town. And a lot of the restaurants and bars on Beaufort Highway also closed down. There's probably four or five of them that we have issues with and we've been making arrests and two of them were just up here before the liquor board and two of them just had their licenses, license suspensions upheld.
And that was for serving after hours?
That was for serving after hours and I believe we have a couple more coming up. I believe they were in court last week, I'm not sure of the disposition on them, but that was for serving minors.
So as you look at these crime stats that you just gave us, is there any way to directly relate them to the late pour hours? I mean, obviously, car break, well, I don't know.
Did you analyze reports to see if, when the policeman has asked where they were coming from or did the policeman see them leave a certain establishment or are they just?
I could give you some of the exceptional, you know, cases we had. We had the pedestrian that was killed recently.
Right.
He came from an establishment prior to, he was intoxicated. The other person that was with him was also intoxicated and one was killed and the other one was critically injured.
Was that a 4:00 in the morning one?
Yeah, that was, I think, 3:30 in the morning. Just this past Saturday, we've had, and this happened right around 2 o'clock, we had a home invasion on Beaufort Highway at an apartment and then a robbery, a vehicle just driving down North Cliff Valley supposedly, and we're still checking into that. We think there was drug activity involved with that, but somebody was shot on that.
Coming from a club? Do you know?
That we don't know. The two people that were shot at were just residents of that apartment complex. And then I was actually out and I told the city manager about this one, but this, you know, we were looking for the car in the area and two cars, one car being chased by a taxi went through the QT station at North Cliff and Beaufort Highway while I was looking for another car. So I tried catching up with them and it ended up being where the car was rear-ended. It was a hit-and-run accident where the driver that hit the car and tried taking off was intoxicated. We stopped him up in the Brookhaven Heights neighborhood.
So what's your opinion about whether if we dialed back the closing hours a little bit, it's not a huge amount, would this have an impact on these numbers, do you think?
For most of them, I believe not. You know, there are some of the clubs that have promoters that bring in special shows or special events and things like that. You know, I think it's probably going to affect maybe five, six at the most.
So I guess, I mean, what I want to know is we're trying to balance the rights and desires of the business owners who sometimes tell us that their revenue is contingent on that extra hour of pouring to the rights of the citizens to be safe and the efficiency of our police to best use their resources. So, I mean, help me figure out the answer to that. Can you, does it make a difference in how your officers use their time? Is there a lot of traffic coming across our streets because everybody's coming to the last hour of one last drink in Brookhaven or?
I think one of the telltale signs is, you know, 60 DUIs between 2 o'clock and 6 o'clock in the morning, and a lot of those were 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning.
That's our close time now.
Yeah, it kind of shows you that people are coming into the city, either coming in or leaving the city after everyone else was closed.
I would support a 3:00, 3:30 close, closing out, I mean, stop pouring out of the building. That'd be less than what we have now. You'd probably want to go a little shorter than that.
Well, I would take the chief's recommendation and get us in line with Buckhead, which is the chief entertainment district for the metro Atlanta. If they can close at?
It used to be. They closed all those bars down for the most part.
Well, that's not what my college girls tell me.
There's a couple left.
Well, there's more than a couple. You know, the Andrews Drive area and there's a big one now on Piedmont. There's plenty of nightlife going on over there. If they can do 2:30, last call, 3 o'clock closing, and the chief is recommending that to us, I'm, I have to go with him. There's not a single bar owner that I've talked to in District One that is opposed to that time period. Now, by and large, they're closing up by 2, 2:30 as it is. None of them are staying open until 4:00, but?
I've just heard from Pubs, yeah, Pubs 71's in District Three. I've heard from them, I've heard from Kaleidoscope, I've heard from, of course, we've heard from Rush and we've heard from some of the other ones on Beaufort Highway before. It's just, you know, you support what you support and we'll see what the other two want to do.
I'll weigh in a little bit on it. You know, I respect the chief's results and I think that it'd be helpful to have that report sent to us. So if you could put that in a format that we could use to further understand some of those numbers, that'd be great. You know, I think Rebecca, you did hit on it right, it's a balance between business and public safety. I also believe that this government is, you know, while we have a vision for Beaufort Highway, philosophically, I don't believe in restrictive government and this issue I believe is, you know, we first said we're going to take, allow our business community to help assist with essentially what I'm hearing is about five or six bad apples. I believe that the Chamber is a good entity to continue that dialogue and see if we can come up with solutions. I'd like to get a status update on what they've done. And I think that the new executive director of the Chamber would be probably very proactive in wanting to reach out and work with the city to do that. I also believe that the future redevelopment of Beaufort Highway will solve these problems. You know, I think that we have a somewhat of a bad element in some, a few bars. You know, I don't know that, I believe that changing our regulations is really necessary if we have a strategy put together to address the bad apples. So while I'm somewhat opposed to any change right now, I just think that this issue needs further deliberation. And that's my take on it.
I don't want to go too much further because we've been, well, we've been talking about this for a year.
We spent a year and a half doing this.
So let me correct that and say, I'm opposed to any change.
Okay, all right.
Chief, those statistics that you gave us, DUI, wanted assault, burglary, what was the period of time on that again?
That was July 31st through, actually, today.
Okay, so almost two months, correct?
Over a year.
August 31st?
That was last year since our startup.
Okay, good. Well, I'm glad I asked that question. So that's about five a month on DUIs. You said about a year, right? Last July up until August 26th?
Right.
So it's about, averaging about five or six DUIs a month?
Right.
Which is about one a week, one and a half a week.
That's during that time period, yes.
During that time period, okay.
How many DUIs total?
60 was the number.
Total DUIs in that time period?
I didn't pull the total that we had. I just ran it between the hour, those hours. And I also pulled the accidents we had during that time period, which was 106.
Okay, now, is this just Beaufort Highway or is this the city of Brookhaven?
This is citywide.
Okay. Are we able to zero that down into the area that we're talking about here?
I can, yes.
That I think would be helpful.
Okay.
So we really can make an assessment because as already repeated at this day, it's going to in fact, impact approximately a half a dozen businesses and they're all basically really located on Beaufort Highway, the ones that have late night hours. I think the Kaleidoscope and the Pub 71, they think they close at 2, 2:30? They're not really?
Sometimes, the Pub 71 said they sometimes, rarely, but they sometimes stay open later and they like to have the option, same with Kaleidoscope.
Yes, the exception, not the rule.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but they've expressed that they don't want the hours changed.
Right, well, I'm saying, but?
Councilman, that's why I actually didn't, I didn't want to differentiate, you know, any other part of the city from that because once you leave those establishments, whether on Beaufort Highway or Peachtree or Dresden, you're still traveling throughout the city.
Right, I got that. We don't, of the DUIs, I know it's going to be hard to answer this, well, maybe you do, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do we know if they're passing through or if they're actually a byproduct of what's coming out?
There's no, we can list where the arrestee lives, that might give us some indication, but, you know, it's not readily available. We'll have to research that and pull data.
Is that question asked at time of arrest?
It's on their license.
It's on their license.
No, 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 I mean, where they were?
Generally not, if they can remember.
Times it's in there. Sometimes it's in there, sometimes the report will say, I've watched this car leave this establishment and then I followed them and they were leaving.
Each report's individual. I mean, and sometimes you officer will ask how many of you had a drink and things like that.
Two beers, it's always two beers.
Yeah, it usually is.
But sometimes they'll say, I was over at, you know, at a club anytime and I had two beers.
Right.
So that's, but it takes some in-depth analysis. You know, it's just, if we'd have to, if we change the hours, if we roll back the hours, are the people going to come out early? I don't know that there's going to be a direct correlation between the alcohol serve hours and DUIs, but the concern that I had was people getting out at a time where people are going to be going to work. That was my concern. That's something I think we can objectively point to, but it's dangerous to have people leaving an establishment at 4:55 on a Tuesday morning when people are commuting at 5:00. So that's why my, the objective data there says to me, that's an issue and I'd like to scale that back some. As far as going up to 2 or 2:30, I think that that's where you're getting to affect the businesses who, you know, might do a good amount of business in the last hour or so. And in my mind, a compromise of 3 o'clock to 3:30 was, when the Shambly mayor told, called me and asked me, I said, that's what I would be for and that's what they adopted.
You know, one alternative that we did locate, and I can't remember which cities they were and we'd have to research it again, but a couple of the cities actually had extended hours licensing where there'd be, because we're providing extra services to those areas where they pay an extra fee or whatever and that would limit?
The number.
The number that we would have.
And you'd kind of isolate them.
Right.
You'd know.
We'd know who's late.
Well, and several of the clubs even proposed that at the time. Pink Pony proposed that, that they would pay more to have, you know, extra hours.
Right. I think that's where the discussion with the Chamber of Commerce came in, was to try and help negotiate those terms.
Well, I just would like us to make some decision because we've got license renewals coming up.
Right.
Right around the corner and if we don't do it, I thought we were going to do this, you know, by July, if not August, because otherwise we're out for another year.
I agree.
I also just want to make the point too, that it's one that you made before, chief, is that, so we're really talking about an extra hour of time that our police have rather than diverting their resources and attention to DUIs and all these things that you just mentioned. It's usually the time that our police force can be proactive and do some real community policing and checking on businesses and really keeping a watchful eye on the rest of the city too. So I would just like us all to be, you know, cognizant of where we're putting our resources to.
All right. Anything else?
Can we bring this back up soon?
Do you want to bring it back up like a month from now? We can take it to the second council meeting in September and that will give the Chamber some time to start talking to the different establishments.
Well, what's the deadline on license renewals? When do they come in?
They are notified in January and they pay by September 30, April 30. Is that it?
No, that's for business license.
I thought theirs was in November.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
When does it start, Bonnie?
In October. They expire at December 31st, so?
It starts in?
When do the reapplication start?
Middle of November.
Middle of November.
Okay, so by November 15th, it's like the drop dead date?
Well, they have to pay by the end of December, but we send them out early.
The notices go out in November. So we need to give them a couple of months lead time before they?
Well, if we come back, okay.
I'm sorry. Here's what I would like, I would like, you're in favor of 2, 2:30, is that correct Rebecca? I'm sort of in favor of 3, 3:30.
No, 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 I'm sorry. 2:30.
You want 2:33?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm saying, I'm more in favor of 3, 3:30. And then there's this other option where if you want to extend the hours, I'd like three draft ordinances, it shouldn't be too much. One showing both those two times and then one showing the extra permit for later pouring. Showing a 2:33 with the extra time to close, extra permit to close at 4, 4:30.
Yeah, the other thing I'd like, the other thing I'd like to see us do is, we've had some confusion about the requirement of the slump. The ordinance we inherited said if you're a late pour club, not just a restaurant serving alcohol, you have to have a slump. And we've gone through the slump process for somebody who, you know, wanted that.
Get rid of this, I won't have it.
Can we have legal take a look at that and either require the slump or do away with it? I mean, I don't, I have reason to think that a number of our clubs that are operating late pour now don't have slumps. So I think we either need to be consistent, I don't think it's, I think it's a matter of fairness, which I've said before, if we're going to, you know, require the Afghani restaurant to have it, then they all ought to have it.
So four things. A 2:33 for close time, a 3:30, a 3:30 close time, a after 2:30 special permit for an hour and a half, I guess, later to 4 o'clock, late pour license, and then doing away or looking at the slump provision. Getting rid of it if we can or seeing if it would need to be gotten rid of.
Okay.
So for the next meeting, I'd like to be able to, I mean, it's, I'd like to have, I'd like to have that presented at the next meeting and then for the following meeting, we can consider the vote on it.
Okay, that's fine, we can do that, but I'll plan on getting with the Chamber immediately so they can start?
Kind of floating those four things?
Correct.
Okay, listen, we've been through this round once before with the Chamber and I can tell you, they've probably have been delayed because of change in leadership over there. But the thrust of that was for them to create a restaurant association where we would have higher participation from the clubs to assist the police force in what they're doing, whether that be an increase fees to help subsidize the costs, definitely better on-premise patrolling for break-ins of cars, helping to self-monitor potentially intoxicated individuals upon leaving, higher promotions of cabs and or Ubers or whatever available alternate forms of transportation could be available. I really think that we need to, we really need to get into this a whole lot more before we go on and my position is the same as Bates. I'm not prepared to make any decision at this time to make a change until such time as we really look at the impact on the business community, taking a recognition of who we are, what we are long-term, and we look to see if we can make adjustments with the business community to make this program safer. Now, my key concern, and I stated this last year when we went along this, it was the DUI, was the safety of our citizens. When we look at this and we just concluded, we're working with about one to two at max DUIs per, what do we say, week? 60 over a year, yeah.
Final month.
Do you have any idea how that relates to the previous year? I mean, are we looking at an increase? Are we status quo? Is it coming down? What is the relevancy of that number?
Other hours?
Well, we've always been basically at these hours.
I know, I'm talking about the hours, what other hours of the day? How many more DUIs are there and what times are they occurring?
Well, I had already asked that, if we could break it out and see what's Beaufort Highway, because this is the area that we're talking about that's basically going to be affected by this.
I mean, there are other places that have, I mean, like I mentioned a couple establishments before that are not on Beaufort Highway that?
Yeah, but we have some people that do this every night. The ones that you mentioned, we already have determined, they're the, it's the exception when they go that late and that's fine, you know? If the hours do change, then everybody's going to have to do a special permit to go on. But right now, it's going to basically affect businesses along Beaufort Highway, the ones who do it day in, day out. The ones who talk about people getting off at 11 o'clock at night, going out at 12 o'clock at night and they party till 4 or 5 in the morning, that's their form of entertainment. I just think that we really just need to make sure that we're covering the base on making sure the businesses have an opportunity to participate constructively with us to address our concerns and our issues. And if we can achieve that, it should take a lot of pressure off the police.
Yeah, and I want to add on to Joe's statements in saying that I think it's sending the wrong message to instruct staff and our legal counsel to draft these, you know, these ordinances in advance of really engaging the business community.
Well, we've engaged them though. We, I've had meetings with, we've had meetings at City Hall with the businesses.
To this, I know, but to this date, we've never seen a plan from them. I think that's, that's a?
Well, that's on them, I think.
That is on them, but frankly, I didn't know we were going to be talking about pouring hours till I saw this agenda just two days ago. So how is, how is our business community going to know that? I mean, it is good that this has been brought up to the surface and let's give them an opportunity. I think, you know, it is, it's not going to kill us to push off the creation of the ordinance for a couple of weeks.
Well, here's the issue is that if we, if we wait longer, then the licenses start getting renewed, they have less time to plan for what the new hours may be if we do adopt an ordinance. I'm simply trying to set a deadline, kind of like Google said, you know, if you don't set a deadline, then people won't get things done.
Well, to that?
So, 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 so by, in two weeks, I'd like to see some draft ordinances and Marie says she's going to meet with the Chamber before that. And I think in a month, there's plenty of time for people to weigh in, we can send out an email with the draft ordinances to let people know what they say and, you know, and we've been kicking this around for a long time. I feel like I'm repeating myself on, on the draft ordinance because I think I said that earlier this summer, trying to get the, you know, sort of two proposals. At that time, it was a 3 o'clock and then the 2:30 one. So I just, rather than say, let's stop and wait again, I think we need to say yea or nay at some point. And a month is plenty of time, I think.
I would also caution us against a ordinance which changes things overnight on a business. I mean, businesses, you know, businesses need to be able to change their business model. So if we?
We can make it active anytime we want.
Right, right, so.
Well, it wouldn't go into effect until the new business licenses, which activate on January 1st, right?
We could say January, we could say that the hours are effective January 1st or we could say they're effective April or May. We could say anytime we want it to be effective.
Yeah, I mean, six months.
But the earliest would be?
January 1st.
January 1st. But I agree with the mayor, we've been talking about this since we became a city. I personally have been in at least two meetings with bar owners. We said the last time we brought this up here and the chief has given us two different sets of statistics that we would bring this back up in July. You know, it's now August.
Well, I mean?
I'd like us to make a decision.
We can bring it up, but I think it's, it's pretty evident that we don't have consensus here about what?
I would like to suggest?
We've got to have something to get consensus or not consensus for. So I would like to see something in black and white, we can look at it and say, I can deal with this or I can't and let the business community see it, so.
There's no harm in doing that.
That's why I'm asking.
I'd like, will you all agree, maybe at the next work session, that we have Casey come in from the Chamber of Commerce and we go through this? Because there is a clock ticking here.
Sure.
And this has gone on probably longer than all of us would have liked. And let's, let's, let's either find out if it's, if that is a viable option or not because that's crucial, my decision here.
Let's just have someone for them to look at at our next meeting and having, before our next meeting. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead, Marie, go ahead.
I'm trying to turn the mic on. Here's what my plan was for tomorrow, in fact, tonight, to get in touch with Casey to say this, that the council wants the Chamber to engage the business community, to ask them their opinion on these four matters. And I think he can get that information very easily. We're not talking about hundreds and hundreds of bars. We're talking about a few select number of bars. And that would be, you know, what is your preference? 2:30 last call, 3 o'clock close, 3 or 3:30? Or would you be willing to pay for a late pour permit in addition to your regular permit? And then in addition to that, item number four, which he doesn't need to solicit information on, we need to get with legal and that is, is a slump required for a late night establishment? And I think, and the other thing I'd like to add and ask him to ask is what, you know, what's your current hours? Because even though our hours are X, we know some of our businesses are not staying open that late. So, you know, let's find out what they currently are so you really have a full scope of what you're hearing from him and I'd like that to be sent to you in advance so you can take a look at that. And, and not to simplify the city attorney's work, but I would think that the ordinance is going to be crafted with all the whereas's and everything else and that section that identifies the hours is going to be standalone anyway, where you could plug in 2:33 or 3:34 or extra, you know, late night pour additional permit.
I will say this?
I think, I think they can begin the work because the real work that they need to look into is, is a slump required? You know, we need to be consistent and what is that consistent pattern? What should it be?
And we were talking about making the hours the same for every night, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And from what I remember, the meeting we had at the old City Hall was about twelve or fourteen bar owners there. All of them were opposed to changing the hours at all. And then subsequent to that, some of them said, well, we could live with changing some of them. I think even the Pink Pony said they could live with a three thirty or something like that, for whatever that's worth. And I think that, that, I get the sense from the bar community what the, that prefer them not to be changed. They want the options, but we have a duty to kinda manage this. So a compromise is in order in my mind, and so if you can just get those to the chamber.
We'll do that, and then from the chief, I'll, I'll ask him, so you can understand the full scope of the matter, because one of the directives you had was you wanted our police department to be in operation for a period of time, so they could better assess. Our alcohol board has been busy. And I think it's important that you understand what cases they're reviewing. If it's selling to minors, you know, what time do they get caught? Are they out there at three thirty in the morning, when they ought to be in bed? I don't know. So let's.
We can hear from our alcohol board.
Right, and let's just, let's capture that information as well, so that you're.
Can you get Patan, Mr. Patan?
I'll reach out to them. But I think that's gonna be important, too, because as, as we have now reaching our twentieth month, you know, we've had some activity, and I think you need to review all of that. So not to delay it further, but we'll capture that through the chamber, and then we can have Casey here on the ninth.
Thank you. All right, we need to move on.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, we had talked at the last meeting that the council, Mr. Gebby especially, wanted to have an overview of the redevelopment powers law. And I mentioned that I did want to have a standalone work session, and I still do. But because there have been questions from the public or comments from the public, we are gonna talk about it this evening, and I have invited Sharon Gay, who is an attorney with McKenna Long and Aldridge, and she is known and renowned as an expert in redevelopment powers law and has been involved in the creation of many TADS in this state. So I think she can give you a very good overview. I might mention this, in the coming weeks, we are looking at creating, scheduling a forum whereby our, the campaign committee will be present for that session to really talk about what their duties are, what they're trying to do, and really pass the baton onto them.
Any other campaign committee that's been formed?
Excuse me?
Any campaign committee, whether for or against.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So Ms. Gay is here to speak to you all.
Let me ask you this, Marie, did you, some of the emails I've been forwarding you with some of the comments and questions, have you given any of those to her?
All of them.
Okay, so have you picked out any of the, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Davison, members of the council. Nice to be here this afternoon, appreciate the opportunity to work with you. And I, believe it or not, this is actually one of my favorite topics, which puts me in a very small group. I did, I talked, spoke at a public finance seminar a few months ago, and I told them I can do TADS in ten minutes, thirty minutes, or an hour. Which one would you like? I'm guessing you want the ten-minute version. But I, I know you've thought a lot about it and learned a lot about it, or you wouldn't have put it on the ballot. But it's, I always find it's good to sort of go back and, okay, let's remember exactly what the redevelopment powers law is and what it's derived from, and then I can talk a little bit about experiences in other jurisdictions and probably, and address some common misconceptions. Because some of the things I'm seeing in emails, I've seen many times. And it's, it's not quite like anything else you, local governments deal with, and so it bears some, some learning. As Ms. Garrett said, I have done, worked on just about every tax allocation district in Georgia. Sometimes we represent a developer seeking to do a project. Sometimes we represent local government, so I have addressed it on both sides. We've done bond issues, we've done just pay-as-you-go. Just about everything you can think of, we've done at least once. So hopefully, you won't have a question that I don't have some idea of the answer. But let me just back up briefly and talk about where this power comes from and what it means, and how, what's before the voters, and what it would mean if they voted yes. As you probably know, there was a nineteen eighty-five amendment to the, nineteen eighty-three amendment to the Georgia Constitution that authorized cities and counties to exercise redevelopment powers. And that was defined as the ability to designate an area of the jurisdiction that's determined to be in need of redevelopment and create a tax allocation district to help pay for redevelopment costs for that area. And the way a TAD works, every other jurisdiction, I should back up and say that every state in the District of Columbia have some version of this. Everybody else in the country calls it tax increment financing, or TIF. We're different for reasons I can't explain, and the original author is deceased. So we'll just let, we'll just say we're special in Georgia. But it's the same tool, so if you read about TIFs, we're really talking about the same thing. And the process is deceptively simple, in that you determine that's, that is, there's an area in need of redevelopment. You adopt, prepare and adopt a redevelopment plan and designate the area as a tax allocation district. At that point, the tax base, the property tax base, real and personal, if you choose to include both, of the district is set as of December thirty-one of that year. So if next year, the voters approve it this year, next year you create a TAD, it's effective December thirty-one of that year, and the base value of the TAD is set at the property tax digest value that year. So let's say it's ten million dollars. That's the value, the assessed value of the real property. And from that point forward, the, the city will continue to receive the property tax revenue on that ten million dollars. It doesn't, you know, reduce a dime from the taxes you're getting on that property today. But as the property is redeveloped and new value is created, the incremental increase in revenue resulting from that new value goes into a separate fund that can be used to pay redevelopment costs, which can include debt service on TAD bonds. So hence, tax increment financing. Literally, it's the incremental tax revenue resulting from the new value that is used to pay the redevelopment costs. If you create a TAD, then the city's increment goes into that special fund. The county, made by resolution, the county commission can consent to the inclusion of their share of the increment in the TAD, and the Board of Education can consent to the inclusion of their share. Most of the TADS that have been done in Georgia have all three jurisdictions. There are a couple of exceptions, but generally, all three jurisdictions have consented. The process is very open and transparent, and there's a lot of public input involved. The question on the ballot in November is strictly, will the city of Brookhaven be authorized to exercise the redevelopment powers? It doesn't create a TAD, it doesn't make any debt obligation. All it does is, is the voters are saying, yes, we think this tool is valuable, and it gives, we want our city to have access to that tool. You would then need to look at specific areas, determine whether they meet one of the criteria for redevelopment area, and there's a long list of criteria in the, in the state law, state laws, you know, pages and pages. But there are three basic areas, a deteriorated, deteriorating or dilapidated area, or a, you know, deteriorated or distressed area, dilapidated area, or an area within adequate infrastructure. And the plan, the statute requires a number of findings. You have to do a pretty detailed plan for, here are the conditions now, here's what we aspire to do, here are the reasons it qualifies as a TAD, here are the things that it needs, here's what private investment we expect, here's what public investment we expect. Then you hold at least one public hearing, usually there's more, on the redevelopment plan itself, and then vote whether to create the TAD. And then the county and the school board, of course, would do the same. The couple of the misconceptions that I see often are, is it a tax break? Do the developer comes in and wants TAD funding, does it get a tax break? No. Everybody in the, in the TAD pays the exact same taxes, exact same digest, exact same mileage rate as everybody else. The difference is what the tax commissioner does when he or she gets the money.
Is the redevelopment powers allow for tax abatements?
No.
Okay.
It is not, it is not a tax abatement, that's a whole separate process. And in general, they're counterintuitive. This has come up a good bit in Atlanta, because of the, you know, there are a couple of large TADS in east and west side of downtown Atlanta, and people will come in and want to do a tax abatement through the, through the development authority. And the city and the county have finally sort of agreed, you know, as a general rule, we're not gonna do tax abatement within TADS, because it's kinda counterintuitive. You really, once you've agreed to do a TAD, and I tell this to my developer clients, it's very, it's also counterintuitive to them, they actually want their taxes to be as high as possible, because it generates more increment. But it is not a tax abatement, it does not create a tax abatement. It is also not a tax increase. There's also misconception about that. The word "tax" needs to be connected to allocation district. It is not a creation of a tax, it is an allocation of some portion of existing taxes to a separate fun, fund to pay for redevelopment costs. And in fact, what we have found over the years is creating TADS and using that tool to generate redevelopment can often cause the property tax revenue of the city as a whole to increase. Because, which, once you get rid of the problem, then the area around it tends to increase in value, tends to also redevelopment. And so you can end up with more overall revenue to the general fund as a result of fixing your problem areas, if you will. And two, I think it's about two thousand eight, two thousand nine, the Livable Communities Coalition did a comprehensive study of the property values within all existing TADS in the region and the property values surrounding the TAD, and determined that there was a significant halo effect, or multiplier effect, if you remember your Econ 101, where the property values outside the TADS increased at a more rapid rate than the city as a whole, and so you ended up with a greater overall general fund revenue, even while the TAD was still in existence. I'll give you a very specific example of that was in Acworth. I was in that case working with a developer to ask the city of Acworth to create a TAD for what became Lakeside Marketplace. It was a brownfield, had very specific environmental problems that caused the cost of the project to be much higher than they otherwise would be. So we asked the city to create a TAD, to abate, you know, to help generate revenue, to abate the redevelopment costs. And I remember talking with the mayor at the time, you know, do you want us to add any area, any other property? Want us to increase the boundaries? He said, no, I'm convinced if you fix this site, everything else will follow. And he was absolutely right. And what happened, within three years after that property was abated, about seven million dollars in TAD bonds was issued to pay for the abatement costs and the remediation for the brownfield. All the properties around it developed, and they were getting more tax revenue from the new property development around it than they needed to pay debt service on the TAD bonds. So they came out ahead, even when they had TAD bonds outstanding, and they'll probably pay off those bonds in about a total of fifteen years. So it actually can be an overall revenue increasing tool, and it certainly is not a tax increase, but it may in fact stimulate revenue. Another question that comes up a lot is, what does this mean for the general taxing power of the city? What does it mean if you issue bonds? Because one of the things that you can do in a TAD, of course, is you can issue bonds to pay for redevelopment costs. And that can either be public infrastructure costs or private redevelopment costs, basically any capital or soft cost of redevelopment that you've identified in your redevelopment plan. And people hear bonds and they start thinking, oh, gosh, what does this mean for our general fund? The answer is nothing. The state law is very clear, and I'm gonna read this to you, because I think this is so important, and this is one of the things that I never stop repeating, because I think it's so important, and it is one of the most common misconceptions. State law provides that each TAD bond, or note, or any other kind of obligation, shall contain recitals as are necessary to show that it is only payable from the increment, and that it does not otherwise constitute an indebtedness or a charge against the general taxing power of the political subdivision or county or board of education. So even if you wanted to back a TAD or obligation or a TAD bond by the general taxing power of the city, the state law precludes it. So if you were to issue TAD bonds, they are payable only from the increment generated within the TAD. And that's just, you know, don't even ask. That's just not something the state law allows to do. And I will tell you, as a result, my experience has been that, and experienced really all over the country, is that TAD bonds are very conservatively sized, because they're not a general obligation debt. They're very conservatively sized with a significant coverage factor of debt service and debt service reserves and commitments from developers and a lot of different layers of protection that are built in. And I saw a study a few years ago about TIF bonds, the default rate for TIF bonds nationally versus general obligation bonds. And there was about a half a percentage point difference. And I believe it's attributable to that careful and conservative sizing and structuring that the market requires.
What's the difference in a general obligation bond and a revenue bond?
Well, a general obligation bond is literally backed by the general taxing power of the city. If you issue a GEO bond, you are committing to levy property taxes and the amount needed to pay off the debt service on the bonds. And you have to make that levy every year, and you have to set it in a separate account, and can't use it for anything other than paying off the bonds, and you have to levy whatever it takes to pay off the bonds. A revenue bond is backed by a specific revenue source. Those are most often done for something that, a revenue fund, like a water sewer fund. That's most typically where you would see a revenue bond, where there is a fee for a service, and you issue bonds to pay for some of the infrastructure, and then that fee is adjusted to pay off, pay the debt service. You know, and I live in Atlanta, and we're paying just about the highest water sewer rates in the country, because that's what it takes to pay debt service on the bonds to fix the sewers. Yeah, I know. Just wanted to make you feel a little better. So a TAD is a form of revenue bond, in that the revenue is the tax increment. But it's, it's not a fee, it's a, it's property tax revenue, but it is more akin to a revenue bond than a general obligation bond, which it most assuredly is not. I thought it might be helpful just to, I know you probably are aware of a lot of these projects, but it might be helpful just to give you a couple of examples, sort of refresh everybody's recollection for how they've been used, some in the metro area. Probably the most familiar TAD was the first one, Atlantic Steel. That TAD was created, one hundred and thirty-eight acre brownfield, had not one bit of usable infrastructure, no water, no sewer, no roads, no streetlights, nothing. And it was a brownfield. And so the city of Atlanta created the Atlantic Steel TAD in nineteen ninety-nine. It's about, the second thing I did when I came to my firm in nineteen ninety-nine was to get the city and the county and the school board to consent to that TAD. And the city has, over the years, issued two different series of bonds in two thousand one and two thousand six for about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars altogether to pay for.
Hundred and eighty thousand?
I mean, excuse me, thank you, hundred and eighty million. Yeah, there was, or it's a little less, yeah, there was about a hundred and eighty million in net proceeds. It was seventy-six million dollar bond issued and a hundred and fifty million dollar bond issued. One of, resulted in a hundred and eighty million net proceeds to the project, which were used to do the environmental remediation and capping and build huge stormwater infrastructure and other significant infrastructure, sort of fifty-year infrastructure, a hundred-year infrastructure in the project, and to pay for some of the parking structure, part of which is actually capping the inert matter, the slag, the byproduct of steel. And that's, you know, resulted in the property you see today. Before the TAD was created, that property was paying about half a million dollars in property taxes to the city-county board of it. It's north of twenty million today, and it's not even fully built out. And, you know, that's, it simply would not have happened without the tax allocation district. And again, the halo effect, all sorts of developments around, and not within Atlantic Station TAD, but all sorts of development around the TAD is happening. The values of the houses and Home Park and Loring Heights skyrocketed, because they were next to a new neighborhood rather than a brownfield. There are, and that's an example of a project-specific TAD. A TAD was created specifically for that project, you know, big area, but a specific project. It was easy to figure out what the redevelopment plan said, it was really the master plan for the development. There have, by contrast, I would point out, the ones I alluded to earlier, the east side TAD, which is the east side of downtown, and the west side TAD, which is sort of the Centennial Park and area where the new dome is gonna be, and sort of going over to the, to the single-family neighborhoods to the west. Those were really designed to stimulate a broad range of redevelopment in and around downtown. The west side came along right after the Olympics, everybody was afraid nothing would ever happen, and what happens to all the land around Centennial Park. And so two different bonds, series of bonds have been issued for about twenty-five different projects. Everything from the first high-rise residential downtown to hotels. Some of the money went into the, to the Center for Civil and Human Rights, to the World of Coke. There have been office buildings, just a whole range of it. My office faces, we write downtown and faces west, and I literally look out on the west side TAD and just can count all the projects that have been created since the TAD went into effect. And all of that, of course, generates sales tax revenue and business license fees and all those things that come with economic development. The city, Augusta, Richmond County, has been very aggressive in using TADS. They have created two or three different, sort of larger area TADS. And that happened not long before the recession, so they haven't had a lot of, it's not like they had twenty projects. But what they have done is have they, in a couple of cases, have recruited significant industries or significant retail developments by entering into what I, what we just would call sort of a pay-as-you-go agreement. What they've done is said, okay, Mr. Manufacturer, you want to come and build a hundred and fifteen million dollar plant in, within this TAD, we will agree and to give you, write you a check every year, enter into a development agreement, spells out what you're going to do and what we're going to do, and we will pay you your share of the increment. Whatever increment is created in the TAD as a result of your project, we'll write you a check for that share of the increment every year until either a certain number is reached or fifteen years, whichever first occurs. So there's no debt issued, but the project gets the benefit of that cash flow.
So you don't have to use a TAD to incur debt, you can just use a TAD to give them the increment?
That's right.
So there's the, no risk, basically, except to anybody but the industry there?
That's right, it's, you know, it's, we'll pay it where is, as is, and if is. And, you know, whatever's in the pot, after a reduction of our administrative costs, you get.
So the taxpayers aren't on the hook for anything?
That's right.
Well, that's interesting, I didn't know that you could do that.
In fact, some of what, the east side and west side TADS in downtown.
There's no risk to that, for the taxpayers, except to the person who, the company that's coming in?
That's right, that's right. Now.
Can you tell me some examples of where they went, where a TAD has gone horribly wrong?
Not in Georgia.
There's gotta be some places.
There were some.
What were the ones for the landfill? Wonder what, North Georgia.
Wondering what, North Georgia, there was a landfill or something that didn't, didn't develop or something like that?
No, that was the one, the success story I told you, my perfect TAD.
Was it a general obligation bond or something that may-
No, it was a, yeah, a landfill and a junkyard.
Yeah, landfill.
But that's-
Acworth.
The Acworth one is the one that was, is the great success story.
I thought that was the, was that the bad one or the good one? I thought that was the, wasn't there one-
It was a very bad property.
It's beautiful. I mean, they have all kinds of businesses there.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the, they're in, we were kind of late to the party. This tool started getting used in the 60s and early 70s. And I know there were some defaults in Michigan in the early-
I'm talking about here in Georgia. I want to know, because we're hearing, you know, that this is, it could be a horribly bad thing. And I want to know if there are any in Georgia where a city or county has been down. Granted, these type of redevelopment powers, where the government has done, made a bad decision and the TAD has ended up being, leaving the taxpayers on the hook.
Well, those two things can't happen.
That's right.
Even if they did make a bad decision or got on the wrong side of the market, the taxpayers are not on the hook. It's the bondholders who are left holding the bag. So there, Gwinnett created three TADS in 2008.
Say that one more time. I want to make sure I was clear.
Yeah.
The taxpayers cannot be left on-
That's right. If, if the, if there is not enough increment to pay the debt service. Let's say we issue $10 million in bonds and we have another crazy recession and the, the property values don't go, increase as projected. And let's say you've got a 10% debt service reserve. You run through that. You've got a year in capitalized interest. You run through that. And then there's still not, you look in the pot and there's still not enough increment to pay the debt service next year. The bondholders are stuck. That's why they want them sized conservatively. I mean, these are, they're sophisticated investors. These are sold to sophisticated investors. They know what they want. The bonds are sized conservatively. It's a higher interest rate than a general obligation bond. I mean, right now, I think they're running about five and a half, 6%, which is not bad, but it's a lot higher than a general obligation bond. But if all of those protections are not sufficient, and generally that would be because the project just didn't happen for some reason, then the bondholders are left holding the bag. And typically, they just wait because eventually the project gets done and they get caught up.
Is that similar to what's been going on with the Beltline Invest Atlanta?
Yeah, I was going to say, let me talk about that because I know that's in the paper. And I, I even had a lawyer who teaches a class at Georgia State email me and say, I can't figure it out. Would you please explain it so I can explain it to my class? Here's what's going on, and I will give you the caveat that our firm has been engaged by, recently by the Board of Education, just to give some strategic advice. We're not involved in the litigation, but I just want to make that disclosure. The Beltline is a little different than it, from every other TAD. And I always remind my developer clients this, when they come asking, what can I get from the Beltline TAD? And my answer is nothing. The Beltline TAD was created to provide funding for the Beltline itself. The idea was that once the plan, the idea of the Beltline and the trails and the parks and the transit came along, that everybody would want to develop around the Beltline. And so there would be, so they created a TAD that literally is a cer- the circle that is to be the Beltline running about, you know, quarter of a mile in either direction. And as new projects happen and there is new increment, then that increment is used to build more of the Beltline, to build the next mile of trails, to buy more parkland, to buy more right-of-way. So it really is purely saying, if we say we will build it, they will come and then we will be able to build it. And that, and it's big. It's, you know, it's about four and a half percent of the digest. The school board was a little more reluctant to agree to that TAD than they had been to agree to prior TADS, partly because it was big, partly because they couldn't quite figure out what it meant for them. And, and so the city and the ci- and the county, and the school board entered into intergovernmental agreement. And I'll come back to IGA's because doing something with the county and the school board is not uncommon. But this was a little unusual. And that the city agreed to pay the school board an annual payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot payment of cer- of a certain amount each year. And they based that, rather than, you know, some previous deals had been a percentage of the bond proceeds. Whenever we issue, like West Side, whenever we issue bonds, if it's more than 10 million or more than 15 million, you get five. And they did, and they invested it in Centennial Elementary School and it's an award-winning elementary school. But this was, we will not write you a check every year, starting in year X, from our share of the, from the increment. This was pre-crash. So the, the projections were just candidly, turned out to be wildly optimistic in light of the crash. Now, there's a tremendous amount of Beltline redevelopment happening now, but they're behind. So literally, the city doesn't have in the Beltline TAD the amount of money needed to pay current, to get current on that obligation, to the school board.
And it's because of that pilot, that side IGA agreement, that they, that they really circumvented that, that, that barrier to access city general funds.
Well, no, it's still not a general fund obligation. It's, and that's part of the challenge because the school board says, well, they're just write us a check out of the general fund. No, can't do that. So-
So the school board made a bad deal?
Well, or everybody made a bad deal. You know, it was based on projections that just didn't hold when the, when the world, when property values went upside down.
So it's not the taxpayers who are holding the bag on that still?
That's right. And there may have been news reports that were a little confusing about that. But it's still an obligation that can, it's a redevelopment cost. A pilot payment is a redevelopment cost. And so it can only be satisfied out of the increment. So if the increment is not there, then there is no general fund obligation. Now, the school board has suggested things to the city, you know, as a matter of good faith. Why don't you give us the civic center for a high school or things like that? But those are things that the city could choose to do to kind of settle the dispute. But it is not something that the intergovernmental agreement can compel them to do. And there's also been some suggestion that perhaps their bond's outstanding and the school, you know, some have an impact on the bonds and that's not true. There is a small debt outstanding, but you pay that first.
Do all TADS partner with, have to go with the county and the school system?
Well, thank you for reminding me that I wanted to get that. Nearly all of them do, just because you get literally more bang for the buck. You know, the county and the school board are a significant share of the increment. The Princeton Lakes TAD in southwest Atlanta has city and county only, did not have a school board pledge. I have typically found that the counties, and usually it's cities creating TADS. There've been a couple of, like the Clayton County, the Ellenwood TAD is unincorporated Clayton. But most of them are in cities because that's more where there's more scalable development. I have found counties generally are fairly willing to participate because there's not a big service delivery demand on them, quite frankly. And they get the benefit of the new development. School boards tend to be slower to come to the table.
You can do one and just leave the school board out.
That's right.
Yeah. And you don't have to have the county and you could do it just purely city, even though we have a pretty small millage rate?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, Peachtree Corners has redevelopment powers and they don't have a tax, property tax levy. So that, you know, creating a TAD in Peachtree Corners is going to be interesting. But they have the redevelopment powers. Yeah, it's strictly a matter of how much revenue you can generate and therefore how fast you could build out your redevelopment plan. But it, the TAD is effective once you create it. And if the county consents, their money's in. The school board consents, their money's in.
The actual plan that you would have to come up with goes through a fair amount of scrutiny.
Yes, yes.
Public hearings, vetting.
There's a list of 28 things that have to be included.
That has to be fulfilled by law?
Yes.
And then a vote of the council?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. You must advertise at least one, and hold at least one public hearing. You have to advertise the vote. You have to make the redevelopment plan available to the public. I've never seen a redevelopment plan less than 40 pages. Typically, they're more like 80 because of significant requirements that the state law has.
Are you aware of what cities in the metro area have redevelopment powers and which ones do not?
I have a list I can provide you. Right off the top of my head, I'll say, most everybody. The newer cities are having to, you know, make that decision. There was a big flurry of referenda in 85 and 86 and 87 after the law was adopted. So everybody from East Point to College Park, Atlanta, Marietta, Acworth, Canton, Dunn Smyrna, Dunwoody.
Dunwoody has it?
Yeah, they had the referendum. They haven't done any, done a TAD.
But they have, they've got a referendum.
I thought they did the, I mean, I had the same conversation with them 18 months ago. I'm pretty sure they had the referendum, but I'll double check.
Shambly?
Doraville, yes. I'm not sure about Shambly.
Does it put, you feel it puts a city at a competitive disadvantage for, if neighboring cities have that ability and?
Absolutely.
Why?
And I say this, and anytime GMA or ACCG asks me to speak about TADS, I say this, get this tool in your toolbox. We just don't have in Georgia as many local economic development tools as a lot of other states do. Our legislature, for whatever reason, chooses not to give us some of the tools that a lot of other states have. So we already start out, I believe, local governments start out a little bit of a competitive disadvantage. I think this is the single most powerful tool that the state allows local governments to exercise because it doesn't-
That's the, that's, that statement, though, is what is causing some angst, is that it's a very powerful tool. And I want to make sure that, you've answered it twice because I've asked you, that the taxpayers aren't left holding. That's what the, that's what the-
I will never, you can never say that enough. With powerful tools come powerful controls.
Right.
And the legislature has done that. I mean, I, when we reenacted the law in, in 2009, I literally wrote or rewrote every word of it. So I'm real clear about what it says.
So here's, here's the next criticism that's going to happen when people watch this. Oh, of course she's for TADS. She works for a firm, that's, that's what she does for a living. It's, you know, there's a conflict of interest in your promotion of, I mean, how do you vet yourself? How do you, how do you withstand that type of criticism?
Well, I, you know, I'm a lawyer in private practice. People are always going to say that about me. But I did work in local government, at state and local government for 10 years before I came to my firm. And I, I believe in community redevelopment. I live in Inman Park and a house that was built in 1896 condemned in 1970. I live in, you know, one of the oldest neighborhoods in our region. I have, and I worked downtown, have for my entire career and I'm not, I don't even remember how many years that is. I have seen the difference that community redevelopment can make to a mature city, to an emerging city, to an urban area, to a suburban area. I mean, you're, you're an inner-tier, urban, suburban mix. That's the place where things need to happen. One of the things about TADS is, you know, if people ask me, are these for just the worst areas in town? The answer is no, because it's not enough money. You're going to need other money and private markets probably not going to come in. What a TAD is best suited for is an area that's on the downward slide. And either was great once and is kind of sliding downhill, or maybe it was never that great and is getting aging, you know, aging and deteriorating buildings and infrastructure. It's a great tool to lift that area back up before it gets beyond easy repair.
Or speed the process of redevelopment.
That's exactly right. And, and-
So instead of a 30-year window, you have a five or 10-year window?
That's exactly right.
So we all be alive to see the improvements.
That's right.
Let me get on with, with J-Maxx, with your statement about the worst-case scenario. So, so when you talk about Invest Atlanta, you know, that's sort of the poster child right now of a difficult, challenging situation. Some people are using that.
Very unusual one.
Yeah. When you, when you look at, that's, that's in litigation or sort, I don't know if it's being litigated yet, but certainly lawyers are interacting.
Right, yeah. Lawyers are sending letters.
Right. So there, who pays that burden of, of cost for the, if it does go to litigation, would that be just an obligation of the city itself?
Well, I don't know.
Even though damages or payments might be?
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't. I mean, it's not a matter of damages. It's a matter of can the contract be in, you know, shall the contract be enforced? Can the contract be enforced? There are principles of litigation and I'm not going to try to practice law for you. I'll let your, your city attorney do that. But there are certain concepts in Georgia law where if contracts are incapable of performance, they can be reformed to reflect the facts. That's possible. My personal guess is it'll end up mediation.
Right.
But, you know, as to-
But the Beltline one, would they be?
Invest Atlanta, yeah.
That would be my guess. Again, my guess on my part. It is a very unusual situation because it's an unusual TAD and it's an unusual set of facts. As to how the city and the school board pay their, their legal costs? I don't know. I would guess the city would pay it out of the TAD because it is TAD-specific expense. I don't know about APS. And sometimes that's come up, even when school boards are trying to consider whether to consent to a TAD. They want either the city or the developer to pay them a little fee for the cost of their financial experts analyzing it. And that's been done from time to time.
Let me ask, I've got another, a couple more specific questions. And I don't, I know you, you've been very thorough, but I want to get these out of the way if I can. So is, is the, are the redevelopment powers, and let's say there's a bond obligation that is, is done, is that, is that bond issued done by the city or the development authority?
Yes. There is, there are-
By the city, not the development authority?
That's right. You may, the law allows you to designate a redevelopment agent. You may designate a development authority. You may create a redevelopment agency specifically for this. Or you could retain that power in the mayor and council, which is what East Point chose to do, for example. Which was interesting when we had to get paid, but, but they chose to just retain the redevelopment powers in the city and council. There are certain powers and certain roles and responsibilities that can be delegated to a redevelopment agency. And in Atlanta, that's what they've done and designated Invest Atlanta is the redevelopment agency. So they say, okay, you're in charge. You take proposals, you structure deals, you bring them to us. The powers that cannot be delegated are the powers to create the TAD, to adopt the redevelopment plan, and to issue bonds. The city would be the issuer. And you would go through all those public processes and public votes that we talked about.
And so if you, if these TAD bonds were, were issued for a, a development, the bonds are issued by the city. That monetizes that future incremental tax increase. What's the limit of those bonds? And is that, how is that determined?
The statute says they can be issued for a maximum of 30 years. The longest I've seen is 25. There's a funny math. If you, if I had my little graph, this would be easier to see. But there's a, typically, the, the reasoning is you size them for 20 or 25 years, but quite likely they'll be paid off more quickly. Because once the increment, once the project is built and it continues to increase in value every year, the increment is going to keep going up. But you have sized the bonds based on a projection of increment at a point in time. So if you thought you were going to have a million dollars in increment, but by year seven, you've got a million two, a million four, you can pay the bonds off faster or invest it in other projects. So at the Acworth example that I gave you, that was a 15-year bond, but they'll pay it off in probably 11 year, 11 years. But 30 is the maximum.
So the, all the affected properties that, that would be subject to this tax allocation district, how many, how many of them have to sign off on them? And what sort of approval process do they get?
Zero and none.
It's really up to the city?
That's right. They pay the same property tax rate, the same millage rate that everybody else pays. They write a check to the tax commissioner, just like everybody else. What the tax commissioner does when he gets it is what's, what's different. And literally, they have to figure out, they have to queue in for every single property what that base value is. So that if my property's in the TAD and it was worth a million bucks the year it was created and five years later it's worth a million five, they have to take my share of the property taxes on that half a million and send it to the city for the special fund.
Let me ask a quick question on that one. So at December 31st, you're setting the tax, the tax digest. And since the property value could be personal, but whatever, if it's the property value. So it's set. Now you have your increment, your increment, and that is used to pay down the, the TAD, the bond on that. Does that mean that the prop, the property owners always pay that December 31st property tax?
Good, good, important question.
Because if you're going to have the halo effect, it's also going to affect the center.
No, that, that's an important question and I apologize if I was not clear enough. The digest, the base value is the value of the property tax digest as of that point. The tax levy is whatever the tax levy is in any given year. The millage rate is not affected. The millage rate is the same inside the TAD as it is outside the TAD. So the millage rate, the same millage rate will generate more revenue as the property value goes up within the TAD. So it's that incremental increase in revenue resulting from the new value. Not the, not the incremental value, but the incremental increase in revenue resulting from the new value that goes to pay debt service. So property owner inside a TAD and outside a TAD pay the same tax rate. Just where their money goes, once it's paid, is what's different.
But let's take that, as, let's put some real numbers to it. So if, if the TAD had a valuation of $10 million and, you know, just use an arbitrary number, the next year, it's assessed valuation is $15 million. That the, the property owner would have to pay the $15 million tax rate. It's just that the city would, the city, the school and the county would all get that $10 million valuation money and then that remaining $5 million of tax revenue would go to the TAD, bring payments.
Exactly. And Mayor Davis, back to your question earlier about why do I believe in them? Another reason I think it's a valuable tool is for precisely that reason. The city and the county and the school board don't loot as a dime in today's revenue. You continue to get the revenue you were getting before the TAD was created. What you're doing is investing future revenue to make redevelopment happen faster and to improve conditions faster, change the dynamic faster than either you or the private sector would be able to do on your own.
Well, now let's say, let's say there's a property owner who's in the TAD that we designate and, and they say, look, I, I, you know, I'm barely making ends meet. You know, I, I don't particularly want my property to go up in assessed value. Whereas right next to them, you're going to build this great development that's going to make their property extremely valuable. How about that property owner? How about that property owner? What, what can they do?
I have never seen that happen. But, 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 yeah, I mean, you could, you know, if they're really loud, you could carve them out. I mean, the, the boundary is sort of whatever, my theory is you could.
You said carve them out.
Yeah.
Not cart them out.
Well, if they're really annoying in a meeting, you might want to cart them out, but you'd probably just carve that, yeah. I mean, you can, I mean, for example, the, the Eastside TAD downtown carved out Peachtree Center because at the time, people felt like that was a fairly mature property, likely to just remain the same way it was for a number of years, didn't really need any help, but didn't really need, wasn't really going to change much. They carved out a couple of the newer hotels for that exact same reason.
But still, property value still went up.
Right, but it goes in the general fund.
Right.
And so, yeah, their values continue to increase. And so, you know, to say, I don't want my property values to go up means I want everything else to continue to decline. There's no stagnant, you know, it's either going up or it's going down.
Right.
And so, that's one of those that.
All right, last question, last question, we've got to move on. I just wanted, there's, there's an email from a fellow who's been pretty hot about this issue, thinking, telling folks it's a really bad idea, and I want to address some of his concerns.
Okay.
We had a Parks master plan, and some ways, some folks are connecting the Parks master plan to us wanting to get redevelopment powers, which I don't, I don't understand that. But it says, in our Parks master plan, it says, "Georgia law mandates that general obligation debt issued by cities and counties cannot exceed 10% of the assessed value of all taxable, taxable property." For Brookhaven, this equates to a legal debt margin of $277 million. All right. So what he's saying is.
That's limited, that's limited to.
So what he's saying is that sentence is the definition of the cap on revenue bonds created by redevelopment powers. Is that, does the redevelopment powers put a cap on revenue bonds?
They're two different things. There is, they're in separate parts of the Constitution. The Constitution allows you to issue general obligation debt, and there's the 10% cap. Coincidentally, there's a 10% number in the redevelopment powers law, but it's completely different. What the redevelopment powers law says is that you cannot put more than 10% of the value of digest in TADs. And in fact, that was a big deal for the Beltline. At the time that that Beltline TAD was created, they had to tweak it to make sure that they didn't go over their 10% of total value of the digest in all of their TADs. And it's not a debt limit, it's a how much property can be in a TAD limit. That might be 10 TADs, that might be one TAD. Now, by definition, that'll limit how much you can issue in TAD bonds because you can only issue TAD bonds based on what, on the properties inside the TAD. So the, it just so happens that our legislature choose, chose 10% for each of those measures, but they're very different. And the general obligation debt doesn't have anything to do with the rev, with the TAD bond debt.
So, so redevelopment powers do not create a cap on revenue bonds?
Well, I, I would say it this way. The redevelopment powers law creates a cap on the amount of property value you can put in a TAD.
Okay.
And you can only issue TAD bonds supported by the increment from the redevelopment that occurs within your TADs. And so you are limited, it doesn't matter what the legislature or the math says, you can only issue bonds based on what you can size, based on projected redevelopment. And a way you would do this is you would enter, certainly any bonds you were issuing for private redevelopment, but even if it's public, you're going to enter into a redevelopment agreement with the developer or developers if you've got more than one. That spells out in great detail what they're going to build, then you hire a fiscal consultant to figure out how that's going to be valued by the tax assessor and when that's going to come on the tax rolls, because it might be built over several years. Then you hire a feasibility consultant to determine, is that really viable? You know, is, is there really a market for that project? Does it make sense? And your underwriter's going to take all that information and show it to investors who will then say, okay, I'm willing to buy those on a, interest rate is 6% and a coverage factor of 1.4. That determines how much you can issue in TAD bonds.
So it's really determined by the markets?
It is a market-driven, it is a market-driven number, and it is a very conservative market.
So redevelopment powers do not put a cap on revenue bonds, they put a cap on how much property can go into the TAD that the revenue, the redevelopment powers.
And J-Maxx, the caveat to that is even at the maximum exposure, there's no exposure to the taxpayers on any of that.
And it sounds like the number for Brookhaven would be, if those numbers are right, 290-something, $277 million worth of property value would be the limit of how much could go into all of our TADs.
Now, I, let me ask this. If there was, I'm going to use this specific, if there was a project, for example, on Beaufort Highway that we wanted to do, and it encompassed a certain amount of acreage, then we're trying to come up with a tax assessment of, of property value. It would be limited to the, to the actual physical property where it was going to be built, or what would the, what would the city do to, to determine?
Well, that's, that's an important question. I mean, the boundaries can be sort of whatever you want them to be.
We could bring the halo effect in for evaluation.
That's right. Generally, what you do is you've got a project or a series of projects in mind, and you take a look at the definitions, you know, which, which definition of redevelopment area does this fit under? And what is sort of the logical area? For example, the city of Atlanta has used TADs to, for a couple of Atlanta Housing Authority redevelopments, you know, Techwood Homes and, and then the old Perry-Bolton became West Highlands. And the city planners came in and said, you know, we'd like the boundaries of the TAD for the old Perry Homes to be a little broader than the footprint of Perry Homes because we want to do some infrastructure improvements along the streets. So that TAD, I call it the Tadasaurus because it has this body that's, that's the old Perry, Perry-Bolton, and then it has, it goes up one right of way, picks up another area that's smaller and comes back down. So it looks kind of like a body with a neck and a head. You can gerrymander. But, but, but that's an important question, and you want, you know, that's something you want your planning and your economic development staff to be attuned to. It doesn't do you any good to create one that's too small to generate any increment. But you have to be mindful of what my next step is. If I create this one and I use 1% of the value of my digest, I've got 9% left, and I might do this area and then this area. If you've got one big project, as a very general rule, you need $7 or $8 million in TAD bond capacity for it to be economically efficient to generate, to issue bonds, as opposed to the pay-as-you-go structure that we talked about. So you, you need critical mass, but the answer to how big it is is going to differ depending on what projects are out there, how much public infrastructure you need, and sort of what makes sense in terms of a logical planning area.
All right. So I really appreciate your help. You've been very, very helpful.
Glad to do it.
It's, we're, you know, we knew, had a surface-level understanding of what this redevelopment powers are, and still do to a certain extent. Would you be willing to do a 10-question FAQ for us, just to let people know what they are and what they aren't?
Yes.
So people can make an informed decision whether they like this or they don't like it. You can coordinate that with Marie.
Happy to.
We, we'd like to have something quickly, if you could, just to put on our city news site and some other places.
I have two or three versions that I've done over the years because the questions are all very similar, and I'll just update that for the current environment.
Okay. And then, second, last thing, because we have to go. Beaufort Highway was what we were looking at when we asked the legislator to give us, put this on the referendum for this November. You had said earlier that the TADs are good for places that were once thriving in their own decline or, or just an area that's stagnated. I mean, Beaufort Highway was once a lot more thriving. It's, it's thriving in, in ways that some are good and some are bad right now.
When I was in law school, everybody lived in Beaufort Highway.
Right. So it, would you say, would you, and you're, I mean, I know you're going to say yes to this, but do you, what is uniquely, unique about Beaufort Highway and our city that you think that a TADs, that this redevelopment powers would be beneficial for?
The, I mean, yes, if you, you know, asked me to look at the whole region, that would be one of my top five for some of the reasons you just said.
Oh, really?
It's got some bone structure. You know, it's got some roadway infrastructure, it's got a history to it, it's got.
Great location.
Yeah. It's, you know, near the interstate and near the airports and, you know, it's got, it's got a lot of great bone structure to it. But it's got some challenges in terms of everything from sidewalks to parks to streetscapes to low-value properties that, and absentee owners and things that aren't performing. And so what I would imagine, and, you know, I'm not a developer and I'm not a planner, but I talk to both of them a lot, is that what a TAD might enable you to do is attract developers who wouldn't have been interested before because there just wasn't enough market without some assistance. Now, what you're really doing, a newspaper editor asked me one time, isn't this really just for the worst developers? I said, no, it's really for the best developers. It's really for the people who know what they're doing, but the market on its own is not quite there because the needs are greater than the market value today will support. And so then you could use, in the, the early stages, you might do a couple of, ideally some catalytic, but two or three, you might, you might end with two or three private developments that will begin to stimulate redevelopment interest. Then maybe the next phase comes along, and there's some of that money you use for public infrastructure as well as the private development. Or have the developers, okay, will you do a mile of sidewalk or, or whatever the level of need is? I would imagine you, that one, you might do a combination of incentive to make the private development happen, but also corridor improvements that make the corridor more attractive faster.
Right.
Like BARRY lines.
BARRY utility lines.
BARRY utility lines.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Get uniform streetscape, get more streetlights, get it, make it, you know, calm it or whatever, street diets or whatever we've been talking about in the region these days.
Well, thank you.
But it's got a, a coherent identity to it that would, I would think would work well.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Extremely informative.
Appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
And we'll be seeing you soon, I'm sure.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for getting, very helpful. All right.
Thanks for setting it up, Marie.
Thank you.
All right, other business?
No, no other business. We can move quickly into the pre-meeting.
Okay.
For the agenda, and I, I know we need to get into an executive session.
Okay.
Under the consent agenda is the approval of the August 12 council minutes. We also have the consideration and approval of the mid-year budget amendment. So I did, did want to talk just for a few minutes about that, but I'd, I'd like to talk more about it in the council meeting.
Okay.
So if you, and then, of course, Bonnie will make a, a brief presentation when we get to the council meeting, but.
Were we talking about pulling that out and putting it on the regular agenda or just leaving it there and talking about it?
It's whatever you'd like to do. I mean, it's customary, and this is different from how we did it last year, but remember, we're 20 months old and we, we had our mid-year budget adjustment as a standalone matter to be considered by the council because, one, we were so young and we were still trying to ascertain the reliability and predictability of the, of the fund. So it was important that we came back the, the many times that we did. Typically, what you see is a mid-year budget adjustment is on the consent agenda, if it's even on an agenda.
Right.
Mid-year budget adjustments typically are handled administratively with notice given to the mayor and council that basically the message is we're tracking. We are, we are this percent to the overall budget revenues and expenditures, and we, we're going to be finishing out the year with right online or with an anticipated surplus. Usually, when you really want to talk about it in a mid-year budget adjustment, if you're not tracking and you want to go to your contingency or reserve fund to be able to carry you to the end of the budget year.
Well, why don't you just give us the, the update on the, what we're tracking?
Okay, we're tracking very well. Overall, you know, we're, we've got revenues that we were anticipating have increased higher than what we expected. Just to give you an example, we have a brand-new hotel that's added to the number of hotels that we have, so they are now paying a hotel motel tax. 60% of those taxes go into the general fund, and 40% goes into tourism. So we are seeing that revenue. We're also anticipating payment into our cable franchise fee as well as the increase in the tax valuation that was shared with you a couple of months ago. So we are anticipating additional property taxes to be deposited with the city or paid to the city. And that was one of the reasons that you all lowered the millage rate, because of the anticipation of the increased digest. So even with that and the lowering of the millage rate, you know, we are tracking. The good news is we are looking at an additional $1.2 million that we see as surplus to the end of the year, which we are showing now in contingency. It is my hope that at the end of the year, which I'll report back to you in December, of how much of that can we put into reserve, to build our reserve? We, we will finish the year at 2 million in our reserve, and we're, my hope is that we will be able to add quite a bit more to that amount. So things are looking very good for us as, as we finish this fiscal year.
So it looks like on the revenue, there's been some, you're asking for adjustments upwards.
Correct.
And then it looks like on expenses, you're looking like, you're looking at for some upward adjustments and some downward adjustments.
Correct. And then, and then also an increase to our contingency fund.
Right.
Because of that additional expenditure or revenues coming in.
For the Parks and Rec, there's been some scuttlebutt that somebody is saying that, I guess we're showing we spent $912,000 in Parks and Rec this year. And what, what is, what has that been spent on? There's, people saying they don't see what it's been spent on.
Well, first of all, remember, your operating budget for Parks and Recreation was about $900,000.
Right.
Which included some contract labor, and included your Parks and Recreation master plan, and included employees, and some of the capital improvements that we were including. In addition to that, we have also earmarked a little over $500,000, $592,000 for additional funds out of the host budget to go into capital improvements into our parks. And I can enumerate that for you if you want me to go into that detail.
Maybe just a copy of that.
Pardon me?
Maybe a copy of that.
Yes.
That'd be good, to have that for the meeting.
Correct, yeah.
Is that host contribution reflected in these numbers?
The host is, is a, a separate fund.
Right.
It's really part of our, what we call our enterprise fund, so it's, it is not part of the actual hard numbers of the budget. There's a separate sheet, if you'll remember, where we had our hotel motel tax, we had our stormwater utility, and we have the, the host funds and then franchise fees. Those are separate streams of, of revenue. What this is showing is the overall, what capstones the, the general fund are the taxes, the licenses, and the forfeitures, and then interest revenue and some miscellaneous revenues that we're pulling in.
But this is not showing what has been spent to date. You're just showing that adopted, the adjustments.
Correct. And I can give you that level of detail if you'd like it. I do have that broken out by department as to what was approved, adopted as the 2014 budget, where they are to percent of budget, and what the adjustment is to get them to the end of the year. I will say that some of the departments were able to give more up to other departments that needed an adjustment. The court, we're anticipating additional revenues because we have additional calendar dates now. So we are expecting more revenues there, just the same as we are with hotel motel tax because of the added, not only hotel, but also the frequency of, of using our, our hotels.
Let me, let me ask a question. You know, on this, on this mid-year budget adjustment, it looks great. I think everything is, is, it's exciting to see these increases in revenues and, and looks good, that we're tracking our budgets. But because we only got this information, you know, out to the public today, you know, and, and it wasn't a part of our agenda packet, is there a downside to us pulling this from the agenda and approving it in our next meeting? Does it operationally change anything for you?
Well, yeah, it does. Well, yeah, it does, because I, you know, I have, we are receiving or starting to take in the 2014 host dollars.
Correct.
Any day now. And I do have projects that are lined up for that, which are budgeted. Right now, we've stopped spending until I could get this adjustment approved so that I could make those switches. And they've been basically, some of the departments have been budgeting of taking funds where we had employees, we no longer have employees, and we now have contractors operating in the department. And that, like retirement and insurance benefits, all of that then moved down to, and I'll give you the example, communications, where we're putting it into more of the newsletters, you know, using that funding there. So there was, there was an up-and-down movement within the established categories of the specific budget department. And then there was an anticipation that we could see by tracking that some departments weren't gonna spend all their money.
Right.
So where we needed to move that, so-
Right, so it's affecting the operationally.
It is.
That's important. You know, I thought if there's no operational impact, just for transparency thing, to give more, the public time to adjust it, to pull it, but I don't want it to hold up any projects and hold up, you know, our ability to operate efficiently as a city.
Yeah, remember, the budget, the budget is where we have the, you know, where we have to have the public hearings, and we have extra public hearings. And, you know, like Marie said, that mid-year budget adjustment was done last year the way we did it because of our situation. This year, it's, you know, it's just her letting us know the update of what we need to adjust here and there, and I just think we need to let things-
Your requirement by law is to have a balanced budget. And so really the purpose-
I love that. It's a good thing.
You have no choice. And so the purpose of the mid-year adjustment, which all governments go through, including the state of Georgia, they do the same thing, is really to true-up the numbers based upon a reforecast of the receipts and a reforecast of the expenses to make sure that that, you know, obligation is being met.
Okay.
Would you, would it be possible, maybe in our regular meeting, to just, the questions I would have are, under the requested adjustments on both the revenue and the expense line, if you could just quickly run down those as to why, you know, you've already said we're getting $1 million more in taxes, but if we could just run through some of those other, and then the adjustments on the departments, it would just, just for information purposes would be helpful.
I would agree.
Do that?
I appreciate that.
Just for more openness on this?
All right.
If we could do, I don't think it would take all that long.
All right.
I don't think it's gonna change.
Yeah, no, that's great.
But at least we've disclosed what the changes are.
All right.
That's great.
On to mayor and council, $80,000, I guess we're not getting paid anymore.
That office you thought you had, it's gone.
All right.
That would be great if we could do that in the regular meetings.
All right, next, Marie.
So do you wanna leave it in consent agenda? We can still go through it even in the consent agenda.
Either way, it's fine.
Just leave it alone.
It can be left there and just have a discussion before-
Right. We can go into some detail. Okay, thank you.
Take each item separately.
All right, next.
Under reports and presentations, we've been contacted and asked to include a National Payroll Week proclamation. Susan, do you have anything you want?
We don't need a presentation on that.
No, I just didn't know if you wanted an explanation.
But they're attending to receive-
Okay, all right, we'll see them later.
Okay, Chatcom, as of just about an hour ago, I've received confirmation again from Joe SD that we are gonna go live September the 3rd.
Are we?
So we're moving along, and-
We're gonna have a test call?
Well, the officers have been training and going through, I guess, testing already with Chatcom employees, and I think they've been, the dispatchers have been writing with some of the officers. Chief?
Yes, Marie, all the officers have been to Chatcom and spent at least two hours there. All of the Chatcom employees, the dispatchers that'll be working with us have ridden around for a minimum of four hours. Actually, this week, I went myself this morning for four hours. Everyone in the whole department has to go through CAD training because we're gonna receive the calls on the computer system rather than over radio or the interact system, which wasn't combined with the system that we currently have.
All right. Maria, I'd like to, I'd like to have Joe SD at our meeting on the 9th-
Yes.
-just to give it, so that'll be six days after we went live, and just, because there's, you know, issues bubbling up in Dunwoody again about their software issue that they've been trying to work on, and I just wanna make sure there's nothing that doesn't really spill over to us.
Chief, would it be, could we, could we attend that day at Chatcom to see? It sounds-
Can we pull the switch?
I don't wanna pull the switch. I just would like to observe. I've actually never seen their operations.
Have you ever been over there?
No, I did, I met them, but I didn't have time to take the whole tour and everything.
Actually, I'd probably suggest maybe go at a later date or whatever, because there's only gonna be two or three of us that are gonna be there, the rest are gonna be at the station, and what they're doing is handing over the calls, one by one, from the cab to Chatcom, any live calls, and it's gonna be a teleconference call, basically.
Yeah.
I would love to go over there.
So go later.
What time of day they're gonna switch over?
I don't have an exact time. I'm thinking probably midnight or in the middle of the night, but-
Party, we have a little party over there.
But let me, wanna pop a bottle of champagne.
Do you think there's something to do for that?
Yeah, let me find out about that, and I'll be able to report that to you.
Get some of the late four-boys to come over.
Yeah, exactly. All right, next.
All right, next. Under new business ordinance to consider amending Chapter 14, which is our treaty ordinance, Kay is here, but she's prepared to go into detail for you at the council meeting, unless you have any specific questions. Okay. Consideration of the comprehensive transportation plan, also you have the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And then moving on to two-
This is consideration of adopting them?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have to adopt the, okay.
No.
Can we put these with that September 9th?
Yeah, you can move it to them, to that date.
I heard from Joe Palati the other day about the transfer, he had some suggestions, and he might be coming tonight.
Okay.
We might amend the agenda, let him speak for five minutes about some suggestions he'd like to get in the record.
Marie, just-
Well, this is, these items are open for public comment.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, the consultant will also be here to, at least on the transportation plan, to do a bridge version of what she presented last time.
Okay, all right. All right, next.